Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, March 15, 2022. I have a meeting announcement. Council members are encouraging virtual participation, public participation, and you can also join us in council chambers now. Meetings are also live streamed on the city channel, on the city website and on the city channel, Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Here, Madam Clerk. Apologize.
Ms. Strasburger.
Yeah.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Yeah. Councilman Kraus joined us, too.
I apologize. I was muted. I apologize. I was muted. I am here, Madam Clerk.
Councilman, we can't hear you.
Five members present.
I am unmuted.
Thank you. And then, as we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And please keep in your thoughts and prayers to the people of Ukraine. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Move.
In second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, agenda is amended. And our next order of business is proclamations. We have no proclamation, so that moves us on to our next order of business, which is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first registered speaker, and I have the first registered speaker, is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Ulan Vatar, Mongolia, Tal Yoshe, Shanti Na, Global Intelligence Society.org, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate 2024. Citizen verification of his or her vote is the key exercise of free speech, in my view. March is Asian Intelligence Month, and I and the GIS are seeking a link with Ulan Vatar, which is the capital of Mongolia. Few there miss the sardonic, anti-materialist, anti-nuke, pro-free speech Hiroshima, J-pop perfumes, the hustle. 2020 Global Intelligence, sorry, Global Democracy Index of the U.S. is ranked 13, Mongolia 16 on free speech protection. Concerns of Pittsburgh Council include the law, laws, lawlessness, lawsuits, Free Speech FS, public comment, PC. We citizens pay Donald Friedson to represent counsel against us in litigation. You see how they hustle us. Law on free speech, public comment, national ultimate, quote, "Congress shall make no law abridging freedom of speech." FS was at the core of the revolution which made the United States. No censorship of freedom of speech. RLM to Teresa Kell Smith email. Free speech, public comment, local subultimate rules of council, Rule 3, Section 4C, abridges the freedom of speech of Pittsburgh citizens, in our view. The illegal counsel of Pittsburgh on FSPC is lawless. This section violates U.S. national free speech law. Rule 3, Section 4C must go. Free speech, counsel lawlessness exists in the ban on profanity. No ban of profane speech exists in the rules of counsel. Free speech, counsel lawlessness exists in counsel efforts to use enforcement guidelines. That is Kell Smith's language for public comment. RLM to Kell Smith email 9, February 2022, quote, "Enforcement restricting citizen's speech was anathema in 1776, and enforcement is anathema now." Kell Smith does not agree. She, and Gross, and Kraus, and the rest of this council want to police our speech. I oppose this.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Tim, Timothy Steely. Is he online? No. Okay. And then, Poma Chakman is the next speaker.
Greetings, greetings and grand risings. I want to thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay.
Okay.
I can't hear anything.
They're having audio issues.
I'm not having.
Upstairs in the tech office, the IMP department. Is on and unmuted, however, they're unable to hear. We'll come back at the end of our meeting to see if we can get you back. I apologize for the inconvenience.
All right.
Then we'll take comments from the public. Is there anyone wishing to speak to council, address council before, in the audience? Mr. Ludwig.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. Good morning.
My name is Les Ludwig. I live at 6589 Rosemary Street in Squirrel Hill. And this morning, when I went in the cupboard, and I said, what should I wear? And I got attracted to this shirt. And I said, jeez, what does that have to do with City Council? Well, this explosion of color is really a reflection of Hawaii. When you see the rivulets of lava coming down the mountain in front of you, and you start to worry about your tires blowing out, you're going to have an awfully hot foot. But what it also talks to me about is the fact that we have this horrible war, and we don't have a very active humanism approach, which I've been talking about and which I intend to continue with help from the medical side of our society. We're attempting to have a publication of this recent article that I wrote because of the concern the doctors have, and a number of other places. I'll also be contacting Bishop Cubic's office to ask for help for a system of thought or action based on the nature, dignity, and ideals of man. Obviously, war disregards all of those things, and we've done a poor job. We haven't learned enough with the UN and other rights of man. We haven't learned enough. We haven't gotten hurt enough. We haven't bled enough, apparently, to what we can stop, and which I hope I'll use my remaining days to propose that we get closer to humanism, because if you look at all the other isms, they're all materialistic, communisms, socialism, et cetera, and therefore, where are they taking us? They're taking us to the precipice of hell, of having atomic warfare and having it on our land for the first time. Support whatever little way you can, even if it's to say that you will sponsor
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig.
A motion on humanism.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. Brady. Morning, Councilman. My name is Tom Brady. I live up at 352 Camp Back Street, Mount Washington. First, I want to thank Mr. Coghill. The Public Works is doing great up in my area. Thank you very much. They didn't do that. Now they're doing great. So thank you for keeping it up. I learned less to complain, more you get done. So what I'm here today for is, on March 29, Mount Washington, Neighbors of the Mount is going to have a meeting on Mount Washington. Mr. Coghill, you're invited if you want to come. I know you're part of my councilman in Mount Washington. Bruce is part of it, and Teresa, you're the biggest part of it. So what I'm here to say mostly is for Bruce is that Bruce, I want you to be prepared, because it's going to be partly by Bailey Avenue. And, you know, we have been having accidents up there like crazy, especially my street. I live on Camp Back. And if you remember, Bruce, 10 years ago, we had that big fire. Well, when I was a kid, when I was 10 years old, we only had five buildings on my street. We were apartments. We were building apartments. Now we have 20, and all 20 do not have garages. And they put the cars up on Bailey Avenue, on the intersections of Bailey and Judicial, or Bailey or Etta Street, and people cannot pull out. And we're having accidents like crazy up there. And we need something done. And I talked to Bobby about this, Bruce's assistant, and I said, we need to put some stop signs. Bobby told me that you're going to have a traffic engineer brought in, hired new this year, and I hope he comes to the meeting. Teresa, I hope you're going to be there, too, because I heard something over in Grandview. I don't know what about that is. But this is going to be the first open meeting to the public. It will be at Shiloh Street, at the bakery, at 6:30, March 29. I hope all three of you can be there. It would be great to see you guys there. So please come if you can. And I thank you very much for listening to what I have to say. Have an all nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. It's already on my schedule. Next speaker, please. Morning, Ms. Brown.
Morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District up at KBW, Irving's Towers. I came last week, and I was showing you, I was explaining, maybe I should start from the beginning. I brought in petitions to have an open hearing. Okay. When I receive a letter from Mary Beth, Yvonne F. Brown, 715 Mercer, and I was at a different apartment number, this is the letter telling me that there would be a public hearing, that I should have been the sponsor. Mr. Kraus has said, we just have two speakers. And I'm saying, who is the, who is this mysterious sponsor? It was me. But he wouldn't let me have five, five minutes, only three. Now Sue Eggers says that you have, we have a right to five minutes for sponsors only. And on the back, I said about Sue said, she's a blind woman. She explained that she's blind, but she can hear very well. Also, there was Skip Henderson, Sue Eggers, and Linda Wallman. They all said I was a dude for five minutes as a sponsor. So he wouldn't let me have five minutes. He wouldn't let me be a sponsor, even though I had the letters tell me that I was. Now, citizens, I just found out that there is a black man named Jeff Water, W. That would be, he had been, he's running for goal, you know, goal quit. Now, I'm saying that he hasn't been contacted yet, but this is a black man. And on the back of his card, they say a lot of things that he had been with. That he also was with, well, he was saying that black lives matter. If he did, if he is the one that said that, I will vote for him. Just like I said, I voted for mayor only because he had been working under the mayor. But do though, so he knows all the little dirty tricks and things that you can do. And that's the reason why I voted on him. Now, also, you had a meeting about the police accountability. Okay, when you had the meeting, they had, there were black women from different organizations. I wish you could pull it up and watch these excellent women that were talking about the laws. Now, I want how the pushback against the black experiences with racial overturn. Now, here you have here, Esther Bush, she won. They wouldn't let her speak. She had asked to continue. Then you had Birdsong. Birdsong even got a war. They would let him speak three minutes. I'm showing you. Look how dark these two are. Esther's dark, I am too. They wouldn't let me speak. There's colorism in here.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there any further speakers? Seeing no further speakers, we will now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Madam President.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 191, Resolution Directing the Director of Finance and the City Solicitor to determine the true fair market value of property owned or held by tax exempt institutions and organizations in the city as of January 1, 2022. The estimated amount of payroll preparation taxes these institutions would be required to remit to the city where they for profit organizations for the purposes of establishing payments in lieu of taxes agreements and authorizing the mayor and director of finance and the city solicitor to enter into an agreement or agreements with institution of higher learning and/or institution of purely public charity for the purposes of collecting payments in lieu of taxes.
Thank you, Council.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the Rule 8, so that this, this item can chair on tomorrow's Standing Committee meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill repair on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Women Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs, Councilman Shear.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 180, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soul Facilities Plan for UPMC Presbyterians, 3701 Fifth Avenue. Bill Number 181, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA and the City of Bridges Community Land Trust or Related Entity for the Sale of Block 56 F-Locks 326, 326-8, 327, 330, and 331, in the 15th Ward, Council District Number 5.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President. Can you hear me now?
Madam Clerk, he has no papers. Okay. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 180, Resolution Taking Up Compromising and Condemning by the City Public Road Race. Third problem is order the city on and Farina Village Alley and/or their located in El Paso Street, and authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related there to. Bill Number 180, Resolution Authorizing Interdepartmental Transfer in the Amount $175,000 from Computer Maintenance Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, the Computer Maintenance Department of Innovation and Performance, or costs associated with computronics expansion for lead inspection. Bill Number 184, Ordinance Amending the City Pittsburgh Code of Ordinance Title II, Fiscal Article I Administration, Adding a Post-Issuance Compliance Policy.
Thank you. And Councilman, Chair of Public Services, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
In our meeting, we entered a professional services agreement with the Poise Foundation and overall cost up to $2 million on services to violence-related activities. $49,050 off the Poise Foundation for its services, with the remaining $1,950, $950,000 contract by the Poise Foundation, the other third party in accordance with Order Number 40 of 2021 and Chapter 237 of the City of Pittsburgh Code.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strassberger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 186, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 726, Amending Resolution Number 548, which authorize the mayor and director of Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement or amendments with AMCOM for the lease of the multifunction devices and the management services for a sum not to exceed $375,000 per year for five years. By extending the terms and increasing the not to exceed amount to $3,435,000. Bill Number 187, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 642, which authorize the mayor and director of Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Beyond20 and Surewell to provide and implement an ITSM system to license, implement, manage, operate, and deliver IT services to meet the needs of the city at a sum not to exceed $542,731.80, by increasing the not to exceed amount to $1,162,257.40. Bill Number 188, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to Extend their contract or agreements with the Pittsburgh Community Television for Public Access Television Services by extending the term of the agreement until June 30 of 2022.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilwoman Wilson presents Bill Number 189, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with Neighborhood Allies to Provide Public Engagement and Citizen Participation for the Community Development Block Grant Program in an Amount Not to Exceed $120,000. Bill Number 190, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Building under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinance, the certain site known as the Tito House located at 1817 Fifth Avenue and 1818 Coldwell Street in Uptown in the 3rd Ward. The owners of the properties are opposed to the nomination.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have no new papers. We will now move on to any unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, move on to the next order of business, which is reports to committee for final action. We'll begin with Councilman Daniel, or Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 177, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for March 9, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 138, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Pittsburgh Tax Sales Item A through C. Bill Number 1018, Marina, and 138, Wabash. Bill Number 157, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the City Code at Title II, Fiscal Article I Administration, Chapter 219, Operating Budget by Adding a New Section 21908, entitled Legal Requirements in Preparation of Operating Budget.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of passage, or if I remember their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Lavelle.
Hi.
Mr. O'Connor.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Madam President, are you hearing me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 178, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for March 9, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 155, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 822, authorizing the mayor and the director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with Quick Med Claims LLC for the provision of EMS billing services to the city.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of passage, or if I remember their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Lavelle.
Hi.
Hi.
Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bill has, having received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. And that moves us on to our last committee of the day, which is Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 179, Report of the Committee on Public Works for March 9, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 151, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 708, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Keystone Communities Grant Program to Provide Funding for the Purchase of Play Equipment in Phillips Park to Accept the Grant and Authorize Necessary Expenditures. Bill Number 152, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Construction Phase of the 30th Street Bridge Preservation Project, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $2,500,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost of $2,500. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill Number 153, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Norfolk Southern Railway Company for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase of the South Negley Avenue Bridge Project, Providing for Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $25,621.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, or if I remember their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Lavelle.
Hi.
Mr. O'Connor.
Oh, sorry. This is Councilwoman Gross. I'd like to register an I-vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Lavelle, did you say aye?
Aye.
Sorry. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Are finally passed. That moves us on to our motions and resolutions, and I have meeting announcements. Tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., council will hold our Standing Committee's meeting chaired by Councilman Lavelle. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting's webpage at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, by 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, tomorrow afternoon at 3:00 p.m., council will hold an executive session on Bill 154. Is there anything? Are they on? Yeah. We have public commenters that joined us earlier, and we were having audio difficulties, but they're on now. Again, can we still make sure, or can we make sure that we can get them on? Who do we have?
Greetings. Can I be heard?
Yes, yes, please.
Great. Thank you so much for circling back to me. So I am East Poma Chakmamahalahi. I am a grand council member of the I am a grand council member of the Air Quack Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And I want to speak today to the RCOs that have been created in the various communities. I've had some engagement with them over the past few years. I've actually assisted in some of the process of the creation of the RCOs. Two in particular, the one in Homewood, I sat on council there and did some assistance work there, helping that to be established as it relates to land use and, and, you know, what is it, environmental issues as well as agriculture issues, food access issues. And I've done that work with the RCO in the Lincoln area. As an Aborigine, I need to be very, very clear. And I'll have discussions with these various RCOs, our nation will as well. But I want city council to be aware that free and prior informed consent is essential when it comes to Aborigine people, when it comes to our land and developing on our land and various things that are done on our land. And this is established, duly established in constitutional law as well as international law. The ADRI, the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, and the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. And those two very esteemed documents that are in fact law that speak to the injustices and what the remedies are to correct the various injustices that our people have faced since and before the modern day colonization. So I want to be clear that all of these RCOs are not the final voice. They are not the final decision. They are not the final decision makers in our communities, on our lands. So I want to be very transparent that I will be reaching out to them as well. And I do encourage city council to sit down and create a forum where we all can sit down and speak to the various developmental projects and things that they seek to do in our communities. I'm already working with PWSA and speaking with them as it relates to, you know, the infrastructure and, and the greening and them correcting the issues that they've created, their ancestors, your ancestors have created with the pipes underneath our grounds. So with that being said, I will yield and I will say, thank you. Peace, love and light in Lake, Alakaeen, the light of me honors the light in you. Looking forward to continue working with city council and these RCOs. Thank you, and I yield. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you. You too. Thank you. Thank you for waiting, too. Anything from members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to excuse any absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting? Have a motion?
I moved.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.